And so without further ado, this session on the city's structure and city charter will be led by Ryan Richardson from the City Attorney's Office. Go ahead.
Good morning, Council President. This is City Attorney Barbara Parker. I just wanted to state that this is a general overview that Chief Assistant City Attorney will be providing and that we'll be following up with more in-depth briefings for the council members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Okay, I'm gonna start my timer. I think I've slated for roughly an hour. Hello, I'm Ryan Richardson. I'm Chief Assistant City Attorney in the Oakland City Attorney's Office. My pronouns are he/him, and I'm excited to be here. I am excited to be before our two new council members, and I look forward to meeting each of you in person. As the City Attorney mentioned, we will be, if we haven't already, reaching out to all the council members, but in particularly the new council members, to schedule private, small-group discussions of any number of legal issues, including charter structure and city overview. So I mentioned that to say that what we'll be discussing here today is really just intended to be an overview in the interest of time, but also in the interest of making sure that we have a forum to answer your questions candidly, and if we need to do it in a privileged setting, that we can do that. And the reason that matters is just that there are folks out there that would sue the city and try to impede the city council and the city leaders from going about the business that they've been elected to do, and we don't want to say anything publicly that would give them tools to mount those attacks on the city. So if there are, I'll answer questions to the best of my ability today, but if there are questions that I'm not sure are appropriate to answer in public, or that I know aren't appropriate to answer in public, please have patience with me, and I will take note of them, and we'll discuss them in due time. Lastly, and quickly, I did want to, again, I know the council president has thanked Angela Robinson-Pignone, but I wanted to thank her as well, and Nicole Nedic. Credit where credit is due, they put together the slides that I'll be presenting, so I wanted to make sure they got credit for that. Also wanted to credit SPUR, their 2021 Report Making Government Work, with recommendations for Oakland. A lot of the history that you'll see in the slides and that I'll be presenting, I think we drew from that report. So with that, ready for the first slide? So just a brief overview of the history of Oakland and its city charter, which I think is helpful to understand kind of where we are today and understand why some of the rules that are in place, how they came to pass, how they evolved. So Oakland was established as a charter city in 1852. In 1931, Oakland established what's called a council-manager system of governance, and that persisted, as you can see, for quite a long time until 1998. And what council-manager system means is that there was a city council, and there was an appointed city manager, and the city manager was solely and exclusively responsible for administering the day-to-day affairs of the city. And under that structure, there was a mayor, but the mayor was essentially was the president of the council, was the presiding officer of the council, was not really an executive of the city, but a legislator. In 1998, the city's charter went through probably its biggest overhaul since 1931 and really to date, and that's when the city switched to a mayor-council form of governance. As I'll explain a little bit later, that it was a move toward a strong mayor structure, and I'll explain what that means, but there are some things that make Oakland unique from others, what we would describe as strong mayor structures in other cities in the country and in California. But in a nutshell, the mayor-council form means that the mayor is directly elected, and instead of being a council member, really leads the administration, and that the council is a separate legislative body. In addition, in 1998, the city voters decided to change the charter to make the city attorney and the city auditor directly elected, and also instituted a city administrator who is appointed by and serves at the pleasure of the mayor. That appointment is subject to council confirmation, but the mayor appoints the city administrator. Next slide, please. So in the coming slides, we're gonna go over the major city officials, the highest-profile city officials in the city, many of which are elected, but some of which are appointed, and all of whom are the ones that we'll discuss today are named in the city charter. Next slide, please. So we'll start with the mayor. I think as we, most of us know, the mayor is elected for a four-year term and oversees the administrative or executive branch of the city government, and does that largely through appointing and giving direction to the city administrator. And as I mentioned, when the mayor does appoint a city administrator, that appointment is subject to confirmation by the council. I mentioned previously that when Oakland amended its charter in 1998, we moved toward what some would call a strong mayor structure. And so traditionally, what a strong mayor structure is, it means that the mayor themselves is largely the chief executive of the city directly. So they will direct department heads, the department heads report directly to the mayor in a typical strong mayor structure, and often a strong mayor will have a veto power in the legislative process, or some sort of veto power in the legislative process. So Oakland is unique in a number of ways. So one is that here, the mayor doesn't, does not direct, does not direct city directors or other staff directly, for the most part, but rather, again, appoints the city administrator and gives direction that way. So it's less, it's more indirect. Also in Oakland, the mayor does not have veto power over council legislation or council actions. For a while, between 1998 and 2004, the charter did allow the mayor to suspend ordinances, newly passed ordinance, and send them back to council for reconsideration. And I believe that at that time, once it was set back, it had to then be repassed by a supermajority. But the voters withdrew that power in 2004. And as it stands now, the closest thing the mayor has to a veto in the charter is the authority to break ties, when there's a tie in by the council, on a council vote, when it comes to resolutions and ordinances. But there are some caveats to that, and there are some recent changes to that that came into effect with the passage of Measure X, which I'll get back to that later, and we'll talk about more. So, yeah, next slide, please. So this is a kind of a short list, a non-exhaustive list of some of the mayor's responsibilities under the charter. One of the big ones, and one of the ones that our veteran council members are hearing up for, and then our new council members will quickly be baptized in, is the budget process. And that begins typically with the mayor and the city administrator preparing a budget proposal and submitting that to the city council, and that often the city council can then amend it from there, but that proposal is often the one of, if not the springboard for discussing what the next budget, adopted budget, will look like. The mayors also can recommend measures and legislation for the council to consider. So again, they don't vote on the council, but they do have the ability to make their own proposals about where the city should be heading legislatively. The mayors also, just skipping ahead a little bit, one of the mayors' more important duties is to appoint most of the members, or the members for most of the boards and commissions in the city. The city has dozens of boards and commissions, ranging from purely advisory boards and commissions to boards and commissions that actually have some independent decision-making authority. And for most of those boards, and in some cases, maybe for some of the seats on those boards, in other cases, for all of the seats on the board, the mayor makes those appointments, often subject to council confirmation. So that is another kind of ongoing and major power of the city. And the mayor is, of course, the city's figurehead and representative when it comes to intergovernmental relations, and that's whether between cities, at the state level, and even with regard to our federal leadership, the mayors typically are representative and speaks for the city in those relationships. Next slide, please. Okay, so the city council. City council is, of course, the legislative body of the city, and it's comprised of eight council members. So we have, of course, the seven district council members and one council member at large. And this is noteworthy because obviously Oakland has an even number of council members, and most major cities in California, even the ones that have an at-large council member, have an odd total. So there's a number of cities that just have district council members, but they have an odd number of districts, or a number of cities that have an even number of districts plus an at-large council members. But for the most part, you'll see that other major cities in California, one way or another, end up with an odd number of council members. And of course, we know that that matters, because when you have an odd number and everybody's participating, it's impossible for the vote to end in a tie, whereas when we, with an even number, with full participation, it can end up in Oakland with a 4-4 tie. I mentioned a little while ago that there in charter, and specifically in Charter Section 305, there's a provision that allows the mayor to break a tie. So, and I think, obviously, for the reasons discussed, in Oakland, that's particularly important, because we, that is, the odds of that happening is higher in Oakland than maybe in some other places. One thing I'll note is that with the passage of Measure X in November, the definition of what it means for the council to, for a council vote to end in a tie, has changed. So, and just to reiterate, the mayor's ability to break a tie only, it applies to ordinances and resolutions. So the council can act by ordinance resolution or by motion, and what I'm discussing now applies to ordinances or resolution, or what we might kind of term as legislation. But previously, the rule was that there was only a tie if there was an equal number of yes votes and no votes. And what that meant was, so as an example, if there were, if all eight council members were at a meeting, and four council members voted yes, and three, four voted no, that was a tie. But if four voted yes, and three voted no, and one person abstained, or was excused for that vote, or something along those lines, then it was not considered a tie. It was 4-3. Measure X changed that, and it will, it's gonna be interesting, I think, to see the degree to which that results in more mayor participation in council votes. But what Measure X says is that if a council member is absent or abstains from a vote, then that counts as a no vote. So in the example I just gave, where you had three yeses, three noes, and one abstention, under Measure X, that would be considered a tie, because the abstention would count as a no, and so you would have a 4-4 tie, and the mayor would be entitled to weigh in and break that tie in one direction or another. And I'll talk a little bit more later on about what the votes that are required generally for the passage of various types of city council actions. So as we know, the council members serve four-year terms, and each year, the council members, as we just went through earlier this week, elect a president among its members, and a president pro tem. These two provisions also were recently amended by Measure X. So one of the things Measure X did was institute term limits for council members. Another thing Measure X did was, there used to be a distinction, there used to be a council president, a vice mayor, who would serve as the mayor if the mayor were unavailable, and a president pro tem, who would be the kind of the vice president to the president of the council. Measure X did away with those three categories and kind of boiled it down to two. So currently, now, as it stands, the president of the council is also the person who would fill in for the mayor, if the mayor were unavailable, and the president pro tem, in turn, fill in for the president of the council, if the president's unavailable. So a bit more simple than the previous structure, I think. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so what are the city council's roles generally? Obviously, the city council serves as the governing body for the city. So obviously, passing legislation, fleshing out and amending our municipal code in terms of codes that folks have to follow, in terms of anything from building codes to public safety codes to our sunshine ordinances, all of it is subject to council approval and amendment. But also, I mean, I guess slightly distinct from that is setting city policy and giving general direction to the city administrator and the mayor. So aside from kind of setting the laws for the residents of Oakland, local laws for the residents of Oakland, city council also, it gives direction to the city staff, but through its policymaking authority and through the city administrator and the mayor. So that will often come in the form of resolutions, or even, I think, as was briefly mentioned earlier, by council kind of policy, budget directives and budget priorities, those types of things are policy directions. The council votes on ordinances and resolutions. Those are two of the three ways that the council can take action. The third is by motion. But ordinances and resolutions are distinct in a number of ways. We generally consider those to be legislation. And one thing to note about ordinances and resolutions is that they require five votes to pass. Five council members must, there must be five votes in order for a ordinance or resolution to pass, and that's regardless of how many council members are present or voting. So for example, a quorum of the council, meaning the minimum number of council members that we would need to start a meeting is five, under the charter, Section 209. So you could have a situation where we are rightfully having a meeting with five council members in attendance, and in that meeting, if there was, the body was voting on a motion, say a scheduling motion, or a motion to accept an informational report, or something along those lines, as distinct from a resolution or an ordinance, and everybody was voting on that motion, it could pass with three votes, because that would be a majority of the folks voting and present. You could have three people vote in favor of the motion, two against, and it would pass. An ordinance or resolution is different in that it require, in that, would use that scenario where you only have five council members, because as I discussed, the ordinance or resolution requires five votes to pass. That means in that scenario where you just have a quorum, all five of those council members would have to vote in favor of the ordinance or the resolution for it to pass. If the vote ended 4 to 1, the ordinance or the resolution, the action, would fail. And what this essentially does is, it ensures that in that scenario, you don't end up with a situation where a very small minority of council members are passing legislation that, if all the council members were present and voting, might not otherwise pass. And it is with regard to ordinances and resolutions, again, where the mayor's tie-breaking authority comes in. So you can see now mathematically how that starts to play out, that if you have the 4-4 tie, and the mayor comes in to break the tie, if the mayor votes in favor of the ordinance or resolution, you would then have the five votes necessary for that ordinance or resolution to pass. The city council also adopts the city budget. The, most of the work, the lion's share of the work is done on a biennial basis, every two years, and that's the cycle that we're coming into now. But it is revisited annually, so there is a mid, what we call a mid-cycle budget amendment. So in the off-years, even though we have our two-year budget, we will still revisit it in the middle of that two-year period to make sure everything is still on track from a finance perspective, from our revenue projections and things like that, and also a spending perspective for the council to, excuse me, to adjust its priorities and to move money around. And lastly, the council serves as the legacy board of directors from the city's redevelopment agency days. Next slide, please. Okay, city attorney. So the city attorney in the city of Oakland is an elected position, and it's a four-year term. Not every city attorney in California or in the country is elected. There's many cities where the city attorney is appointed typically by the governing body or the legislative body. In fact, in Oakland, that used to be the case of before, again, that major charter overhaul in 1998, the city attorney in Oakland was appointed by the city council, and could in turn be removed by the city council and replaced by the city council. And as I was looking into the history of that charter amendment and kind of the arguments in favor, my understanding is that that charter amendment in 1998 was born out of a concern that if the city attorney were giving advice that the council didn't like, or took an action that the city council didn't like, even if that advice were the right advice, or that action was the right action, that the city attorney could face removal, and that that could have a negative effect, the effect of kind of dissuading the city attorney from giving their earnest advice or taking the best course of action in a given situation. And so this was, the election process was intended to make the city attorney a bit more independent, I guess, similar to a, not exactly like a judge, but along the same lines of why judges might be elected, not for them to be politicians, but for them to be independent. Next slide, please. So this is a list of some of the city attorney's duties, and those are mostly found in Charter Section 401.6. And most of them are what I think one would expect the duties of the city attorney to be, and that's to provide legal services, advice, and representation to elected officials. That includes the city administrator, as well as boards, commissions, and other agencies for the city. We, the charter says to draft ordinances and resolutions, that that's often our role. It is also sometimes our role that, you know, in the case of council members, that the council members themselves and their staff will take the first stab at drafting a resolution or an ordinance, and that our office will conduct a review and review it for form and legality, and make sure that, and provide feedback on maybe how to tighten it up and make it more understandable, more defensible, those types of things. The same is true of contracts, where it often, most typically, the contracts are, in the first instance, negotiated and drafted by city staff, and our office reviews them for form and legality and revises them as necessary. But in all those cases, ordinances and resolutions and contracts, and other legal documents, ultimately, our office needs to sign off on the document, again, as to form and legality. And what I mean by that is, not that, it's, again, not our place to weigh in as to whether we think from a policy perspective, or a cost perspective, or an efficiency perspective, that the ordinance or resolution is good or bad, or a good idea. We're really looking at it to advise on whether it's on solid legal ground. And then, you know, one of our biggest jobs in the city attorney's office, kind of as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, is to defend the city, to make sure that we're looking forward to, I think, in the first instance, defending the city means mitigating the risk that the city will get sued. But when the city does get sued, it's our duty to defend the city against those claims and lawsuits. Under Charter Section 401.6, the city attorney needs the city council's authorization to settle or dismiss litigation. There, the council has delegated, officially delegated to the city attorney, some authority for the city attorney to settle smaller cases without constantly going back to council for authority. But for the most part, and always for larger cases where there's more exposure for the city, the city attorney needs to go to the city council to update them on the facts of the case, the city's exposure, if any, and to get direction from the city council in terms of where to go with the case, whether to settle or dismiss it, or go to trial, or what have you. And that typically happens, will happen in closed session. So, and this is, this gets a little bit into the Brown Act and our sunshine ordinance, but that's essentially, you know, the two ways that the council can meet, open session, which we're doing now, and closed session, which often is for the purposes of getting direction on claims and lawsuits. So the city attorney will get the direction of the council's goal for the claims and lawsuit, and then it's the city attorney's job to figure out what specific strategies to use to achieve that goal. So what specific motions to file, what specific arguments to make, what specific approach to take in negotiations, those types of tactics are up to the city attorney. But the overall goal, how the city wants this lawsuit to end, and what we're striving to do, comes from the city council. And then the city attorney can initiate lawsuits. Sometimes the case that the city is the plaintiff, and that the city needs to do something typically in court to protect or enforce its rights. And that's also in the city attorney's purview to do that. Those can come about in one of two ways. The city, under Charter Section 401.6, the city attorney can initiate the lawsuit kind of independently, and then seek council ratification after the fact. But also can, if time permits, go to the council ahead of time and get direction from the council about whether or not to initiate litigation. And again, that that process will typically happen in closed session. Next slide, please.
Before you go on, Ryan, I just wanted to add about the initiation of a lawsuit. And when you discussed this more in the briefings, the city attorney also has independent authority under state law to bring certain kinds of suits on behalf of the people of the state of California. One example is public nuisance actions. Just to give you that sort of broader authority in some context.
Thank you. Okay, so that city auditor, city auditor, like our other elected officials, is elected for a four-year term. And as most of us know, the various city officials, the charter tries to kind of split them up into two groups, so that every, every two years, roughly half of our city officials are, there's an election in roughly half of our city official offices. And the city auditor is, their job is to help ensure that the city is running efficiently and effectively, and to deter fraud, waste, and abuse, which I'll talk about a little bit more, I believe, in the next slide, so we can go to that. So the city auditor's duties, I believe they're largely found in Charter Section 403. And some of them are listed here, but there are a number of other powers and duties that the auditor has, but these are some of the main ones. One of them is to, as the name obviously indicates, to perform audits of the city, financial audits, but there's also performance audits that the, that the city auditor conducts. So to see if city money is being well-spent, but also to see if city operations are running efficiently and running the way they should. Those are, at least in my understanding, that kind of the two types of, main types of audits that the city auditor conducts. And I think one of the things that I didn't list here, but as we mentioned in the last slide, and I know this is one of the things that the auditor's office historically, and our current city auditor takes very seriously, is evaluating the city's internal controls to safeguard city resources. is is evaluating um the city's internal controls to safeguard city resources against, not just against inefficiency, but against specifically like fraud, waste and abuse. So um the city auditor has a hotline and a and a whole and a specific process for receiving complaints from from whistleblowers and outside parties. But also, you know, they have their own processes for looking for potential fraud, waste and abuse and and investigating those uh and making sure that we, that it's addressed um timely where where it's occurring. The city auditor also prepares impartial financial analysis of all ballot measures and proposed major expenditures. This is um, just reminds me of one of the other duties that the city attorney has. So when we talk about ballot measures, the city council um, may Pat may put something on the ballot by its own resolution or the voters, by collecting enough signatures through an initiative process, can put something on the ballot. But in both cases, there needs to be prepared uh an impartial legal analysis and an impartial financial analysis. So what are the legal implications of this ballot measure? That's the uh city attorney's job typically. Um, unless the ballot measure would impact the city attorney's office, in which case we'll ask another city attorney's office to prepare it. And similarly, for what it, what are the financial impacts of this ballot measure? The city auditor's office will prepare that. Unless the ballot measure in will impact the city auditor's office financially or in in some other way, in which case the city auditor will ask some other cities, the auditor of some other city to prepare that analysis. Um, but we, okay, we did have performance audits in here. So and then finally, um, the city auditor provides assistance to city departments to improve their effectiveness. So I think that, you know, what, I think what the city auditor would say is that the goal of the audits uh is is really the the recommendations that come at the end um and how do we, how do we improve city processes. Going back to Measure X real quickly, another, um, there's a number of in significant changes that Measure X will make. One of them, uh among them is the fact that uh there's now minimum staffing for the city auditor's office for, and again, this is not the exhaustive list of the city auditor's duties, but the city, under Measure X, the city auditor uh has to be budgeted for at least fourteen full-time, the equivalent of fourteen employees annually and and let with with certain exceptions for, you know, if the city's in an extreme um financial hardship. But generally speaking, uh, there's there's now minimum staffing for the city auditor's office. So it will be, I think, interesting to see what impact that has on the 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 number of audits and the city auditor's ability to discharge this really long list of duties that that the office has. Next slide, please. Okay, so that the city clerk is among our um most important and highest-profile city officials, but uh notably, the city clerk is not elected. The city clerk is appointed by the city administrator and confirmed by the city council. And next, next slide, please. And among the city clerk's duties are to, they're the they're the city's official record keeper when it comes to council actions, I think is maybe the easiest way to think of it. But but if we break that down, we're talking about ordinances, resolutions, motions, and then the minutes of the discussions that happen at the meetings where those ordinances, resolutions and motions are are passed or or where they don't pass. So they're the city's official record keeper, particularly for legislative records. Um, they're the the city clerk is um kind of at the center also just of the city's um public records duties and efforts generally. Uh, they they are, a lot of this city records retention policy is largely um managed by and overseen by the city clerk's office. The archiving of city records and the and the contracts for making sure that we're archiving properly are managed with the city clerk's office. The uh the city's contract for making sure that our our new legislation is posted on Muni code and that they're they're staying on top of of publishing our new ordinances and things like that. It are all managed through the city clerk's office. So that's that's kind of the the backwards-looking record keeping. And then the the city clerk, um, just day-to-day, week in, week out, is responsible for facilitating forward-looking the legislative process. So helping the council and staff um prepare for meetings, put prepare for posting the agendas, getting the information, titles, documentation, agenda materials in on time, and then reviewing them, catching catching problems, um, you know, week in and week out, catching issues and bringing them to our office's attention or to staff's attention. And and then, once everything's in order, making sure that those materials are posted and published accordingly, always in conformance with the Brown Act and sunshine, but often there are specific requirements in the charter or in state code that require us to, for instance, publish things in a newspaper for a certain number of days before it's considered a council and things like that. And the the clerk is responsible for uh making sure all of that happens uh week in and week out. And then the the clerk is uh the city's um elections official. So uh helping, making sure the city complies with um its duties in 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 conducting elections, in calling elections, uh assisting candidates as that when they want to get their name uh on the ballot, assisting uh voters who are, who put together initiatives to put to put a measure on the ballot themselves from the kind of the initial process of of their notice of intent to to start an initiative, to gathering, to actually counting the signatures at the end of the day and and certifying that um it's ready to be placed on the ballot. The and then also, the clerk's office is responsible post-election for making sure that uh we get the certifications from the county and that they're brought to the to the um the council for for declarations of winners and things like that. And so inevitably, every every time there's election cycle, um, there's new issues that come up and our our office is working closely with the clerk to to navigate those. And then, as as everyone here, uh or everyone, all of the members of the council knows, the clerk is responsible for administering the official oaths of office to our elected officials. Um, next slide. Okay, so and it, coming back to the city administrator, we talked uh a little bit about how that the the mayor, the mayor in Oakland is not a uh traditional strong mayor in the sense that that we don't have department heads and program managers reporting directly to the mayor for the most part. Instead, we have those folks reporting to the city administrator who in turn reports to the mayor. So we talked a little bit about one of the mayor's powers is to appoint the city administrator. But it's it's really the city administrator that's responsible for the the day-to-day administrative and fiscal operations of the city. So the uh typically, the the first place a department head would go to to get direction, to get approval for something is either to the city administrator or in in off, in some cases, the city administrator's designees, an assistant city administrator, uh who may be kind of the liaison for that department. But the city administrator's office and the city administrator are ultimately responsible for the day-to-day management of city affairs and administration of city affairs. Uh, but of course, the city administration, uh city administrator is going to receive, can receive direction, what kind of big-picture policy directives or um more targeted directions from the mayor. And as we mentioned, can receive policy directions from the city council. So the the council may task the city administrator with achieving some policy goal. The the day-to-day details of going about navigating that and how to achieve that goal are going to be up to the the city administrator and the mayor. So and and so just, again, this final note on kind of the strong mayor thing. Uh, uh, in in San Francisco, for example, what their charter says is that the 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 mayor directly, has direct oversight of all administrative departments. Um, here, it's the city administrator that has that direct oversight of the of administrative departments. And I believe, yeah, and we've covered the rest of this. So this, the city administrator does however, take direction from the mayor. So they're they're kind of work in tandem as a team to to provide that administrative direction to our departments. Next slide, please. So the city administrator uh has a duty to the council to enforce its laws, uh including its its ordinances and to enforce its policies. And and not just enforce them, but to administer them um and to see to it that they're that they're understandable and that um, you know, often issue regulations or FAQs and those types of things. Uh, the city administrator, as as the chief executive officer, is often going to have insights into what will kind of operationally work, what's advisable and what's not, and therefore is is in a position to make recommendations to the city council about city affairs. We'll we'll see this in the budget process, but but um across the board, public safety ordinances, building and safety um legislation, the city administrator will have recommendations. They are, they are the city's chief financial officer in the sense that they're tasked with managing the city's financial affairs in conjunction with the uh largely, I think, working with the city's director of finance. And they, as we mentioned, the the city administrator helps the mayor in preparing a budget proposal for the council. Um, and in addition to to policies, the city, enforcing policies, the city administrator oversees city projects, so that when, if there's a development projects, homelessness intervention projects, um uh macro, things like that, that that it's the city administrator who's would typically be tasked with standing those projects up, getting them up and running, getting them staffed. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, and this is, this is, I'll just reiterate, this really is an overview. Um, the kind of the the council administrative relations and where's where some of the lines are drawn between, you know, council authority and city administrative authority. Uh, it is very fact-dependent. It's, there's even on our website, and this will be covered in our, in uh the briefing that we give this city council members. Uh, there's dozens of public legal opinions on the city attorney's website and many of which speak to these issues specifically. And and really, what it comes down to is, there's no bright line sometimes between um the city administrator's role and the city council's role. And that's to be expected because we don't want to have gaps in in our safety net for for city residents and city services. Um, but sometimes it it can be hard to see where that gap is, but where that line is drawn. But generally speaking, um, the city council, as we discussed, acts via ordinance, resolution or motion and gives, and in that way gives direction to the city administrator. Um, it's through those policy directives and legal directives. But what the charter says is that the city council does not have administrative authority and can't interfere with administrative affairs. So um, one of the things that that definitely means, um, when we talk about interference in uh administrative affairs, is typically, especially individual council members, the idea is to go through the city administrator for questions and feedback um and coordination on administrative affairs, on administrative questions and issues, as opposed to going directly to staff. Um, and, you know, trying to get answers from staff or or set the staff to some task or get a report back from staff. It's it's always safer to go to the city administrator. Um, and it, but it also means, once the the city council has given a policy directive or a broader policy directives, that the the administration of that, carrying out that directive, directing which employees to do what in furtherance of that policy directive or to achieve the goal or finish the project, is really up to the city administrator. Uh, and then, I think we're on our last slide, and that should leave us a little bit of time for um questions. So if we go to the next, let's see, yeah. Next slide, please. So um, and this slide, I think, is is just kind of a uh a pre, a little bit of a discussion on how the city administrator goes about keeping track of the various policy directives that that the city council has given it. Uh, so one of the ways is um on the city's website. But I'm also aware that the city um clerk's office and folks in the city administrator's office are um well on their way to working with uh Legistar to use some of its additional functionality that it has to not only allow the city to track our agendas and our legislation and and agenda materials, but also to um to track directives that come from the the city council via legislation or motions. So to 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 track their progress after they've been passed. Um, and see, and then I'm just generally aware that the city administration is working on other protocols, I think, to better work with the city, the city council in um again, tracking those those priorities and and also, I believe, uh prioritizing. Because it's one thing, I think, to have an exhaustive list of every, all the outstanding directives from the city council. It's another thing to know. Realistically, we may all be in agreement, we can't achieve all of these in the near term. It's another thing to know which of these are the priorities, which of these should, does the council want staff working on before the others? Um, so with that, I will um invite questions or, and then if I, if there's anything that I missed, I don't know if city attorney Parker wants to add anything, um, I'd invite others to to add anything that they'd like to add as well.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Richardson. Really appreciate it. So we have um about fifteen minutes for questions and a little bit of discussion if needed. I do want to make sure that the new council members, as well as the newer council members, um, have space here to ask questions. So feel free to raise your hand. And if your hand is up, I will call on the newer council members first.
Madam President, can I just uh provide one clarification before I proceed? Um, and it's with respect to the nineteen ninety-eight charter amendment that was discussed that before in the city, in many ways, the city auditor was already elected at that time. And it's something we have to dig deep to find, but that's been elected for many, many years and was not amended with Measure X and the Strong Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, before I start calling on the council members, um, I do want to note that I uh would appreciate city administrator Ryskin um sharing a little bit on this last slide about some of the protocols that we have in place. Perhaps not right now, maybe we'll hear from the council members first and collect all the questions. But I think it would be helpful, um especially given the non-interference in administrative affairs. Um, it would be helpful to hear from the administrator about how we conduct our business.
Um, so the reason that I wanted to add this slide was precisely because of the the issues that we're we're discussing and because um, as Mr. Richardson said, that the charter provides kind of a framework and some guardrails, um, but not necessarily bright lines. And I know, you know, this is a unique form of government. It's not a council manager form. It's not a strong mayor. It's something in between. And I know that this has been, you know, frankly, an issue of tension or confusion in terms of uh who has responsibility for what. And and though the council doesn't have administrative authority under the charter, I understand, as the council president just said, that you are responding to your constituents, to to their questions, to their concerns, to their demands. Uh, you are developing policy that you want to see implemented. Um, so I I don't want uh the administration to be kind of using a charter as a way to block uh your ability to do your job effectively. So that the reason that I, that was the reason I wanted to add this slide, that um, you know, first of all, in terms of uh council policy directives, there are a lot of them. Um, and I don't think we have historically on the administration side that done a good job of tracking them. Uh, so we have uh been updating based on the last budget cycle, and we'll be updating on our website uh the status of those, and we'll endeavor to keep them updated on ongoing basis so that you you can see how we are managing uh the or the status of the directives that you have created during the budget process. And as Mr. Richardson mentioned, um, that, you know, those are just the budget policy directives. But every time you, or most times when you enact legislation, whether via ordinance or a resolution, and additionally by motion, you're providing direction to us to do something. And sometimes every resolved clause has a different And sometimes every resolved clause has a, a different task for us to do. And we have not been systematically tracking those. Departments go off and, and execute based on that council direction. But we haven't had a good accountable way to do that tracking. So we have been, uh, looking at how we can use our existing Legistar system, uh, to better, better daylight all of that so that everybody, the public, the council, the administration, uh, can see the status, uh, or at least can see the list of all that, all those directions that have come from the city council and that accountability will, I think, help everybody. It will, as Mr. Richardson suggested, suggested beg the question at some point of prioritization, because there's generally more direction given than the administration has the capacity to respond to at least within a, within a certain timeline. So, uh, I think it will help create a conversation where we can help prioritize those things and help hopefully better at the front end of council direction, set some expectations or understanding of administrative capacity or reprioritization that is needed. Um, so in terms of the protocols, we had developed, um, that, the, the charter kind of says what you, what you can't do in terms of administrative interference. There's a, a administrative policy that elaborates further on that. But last year or two years ago now, we developed a draft set of protocols to try to facilitate, uh, the kinds of interactions such as both council members called and Bass made reference to in terms of how, how better can council members and their staff interact with the administration? We presented that at a public meeting, I think it was back in February of twenty twenty-one. It was kind of a, a retreat, uh, kind of like this. It was an all-day session. That was one of the items on the agenda. We presented that for kind of review and feedback. Uh, I don't think we got a whole lot of feedback at that time, uh, but I think it, it's a good starting point. That's something that, you know, from the discussion today, we can refine and, and resubmit to the council for its consideration. In, in short, um, I, I think there is not a problem. You know, there, there are many channels, uh, three one one being one, there are many channels, uh, to, uh, request service or information from the city. Um, I, I don't interpret the charter as preventing city council members or staff from engaging directly with city administration staff for, for purpose of inquiry or information gathering. Um, if an, if a request is something that is going to be substantial and request time and effort from the person responding, um, that's something that's bet, better to go through the city administrator's office. But it's, it's a simple, what's the status of the, the tree down on Skyline Boulevard? Um, I think that those kind of direct inquiries are, are fine and better done in a, in a direct basis. What we did propose in the communication protocol was that for anything that's, that's more substantial or significant that you, uh, at least include in the correspondence, you either directly come through our office or at least include us on the correspondence because, oh, we can't track the responsiveness of city departments to council member requests if, if we don't have any visibility into them. And that was really one of the core things that we were seeking to establish in that protocol. Um, also encouraging, and I know many of you do this, that if you have uh, an interest area of your own from a policy standpoint or of your constituents from a service standpoint, um, relative to any number of departments that you meet regularly with those departments. And I know, again, a number of you do that. You have regular meetings with some departments. Uh, you're not making policy or providing direction. You're just exchanging information and making sure that department leadership is aware of issues and concerns in your district. And I think that is fine as well. So we can, we will make an effort to refresh those protocols and resubmit them to you for your consideration. Uh, I want to make sure that, uh, we don't have walls between the council and the administration, uh, but that we do our best to enhance working together. And as I noted in the last bullet, you know, I have offered and the offer stands and, and I do with pretty much everyone on the call to meet regularly with, uh, with each elected official. Um, and I know others on my staff, and as I said, other departments do so as well. That kind of communication exchange is often one of the best ways for us to figure out how we can work together. Uh, all that said, I, I'm open to, uh, other suggestions or things that you think we and, and my successor and, and our successors can be doing differently. Um, so that, that's what I have to say on this and I can speak to council member guys' questions, uh, whenever you deem appropriate, Madam President.